You're paying to be on the board. I think it's based on your active participation. So if you're paying for it, all of them. Now, they'll do something. I can get this, you know, I mean, you get more or something. That's just the most.
That's one of the factors that I have. That's not going to be known to me.
Now, you could be appointed or removed.
All rise. Benton County County Commission is now in favor. Roll down more carefully.
Our invocation tonight is going to be by Commissioner Mike Nunry.
And most gracious and loving heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here to be with you tonight. Please bless us and help us to make good decisions as we go forward. To have a few that are sick throughout our family that are here, please be with them and help them as we go forward. All these things we ask of your precious name.
Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Bain, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The sheriff has asked that if you have your cell phones in here tonight, that's fine, that's good, but please silence them for us so that we won't interrupt the meeting. Roll call, please. Donald. State Miss Stokes. Rocky Preston. Bill Melton. Juan Valer.
Here.
Lozanne.
Here.
We have four team friends in court. Okay, we do have a court. Next is number one, which is the approval of our agenda. I need a motion to bring it to the floor in a second. Motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Nunry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number two is the citizens' forum. Commissioner King, would you look and see if anyone signed up?
Zero, nada.
Okay, that's fine. We'll move right on then to the commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner that would love to speak? Commissioner Price, you're reading us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got an issue that I think needs to be brought to the forefront and needs some additional discussion later on, not meant to be solved by any means in this meeting tonight. One of the resolutions brought forth by the mayor during our August 19th, 2024 commission meeting was Resolution 202, 408, 19-17. In this resolution, the mayor requested permission to enter into a contract on behalf of Benton County for the purchase of the First Bank Building on the Court Square here in Camden for a price of $480,000 with the seller financing. Prior to voting this resolution, prior to voting, this resolution was amended to include the wording, and I quote, "That no contract shall be executed until the building has been inspected and approved by state and local codes." The amended resolution was voted upon and it passed. On August 20th of this year, the Camden Codes Enforcement Officer conducted a preliminary walkthrough inspection of the building. Only partial findings were made available as the power and the water were not currently turned on. I spoke with the Codes Inspector and today, and as of this morning, there have been, there has not been any completed inspection of electrical or plumbing systems since his initial inspection on August 20th. This is according to the Codes Inspection Officer here in Camden. Also, there has not been an inspection by the fire chief or fire marshal. The Codes Inspectors' report did include some detailed requirements, such as American Disability Act, ground fault circuit interrupters, signage, fire extinguishers, et cetera. He also stated in his report that a certificate of occupancy is required before the building can be occupied. And this is a copy of the report from the inspector, Codes Inspector. During the September 16th meeting this year at approximately 6:16 PM, the mayor was asked to update the commission regarding the status of the bank building inspection. Don't have the exact wording, but we were told that there were some handrail issues, some other small things, but everything else seemed to be in good order. I've acquired copies of a deed of trust and also a warranty deed that have been filed here, courthouse. And these documents, to me, indicate the First Bank Building has been sold to the Benton County Government before these conditions were met. It appears to me these conditions, that the conditions of the amended resolution have not been honored or met. Therefore, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to convene a special call meeting as soon as possible regarding this matter. That is in the form of a motion.
Could I say one thing?
Yes, sir, you may.
That's not true at all on the water and sewer not being owned, the electric and water. Everything is still owned in First Bank's name when he inspected. We did a complete walkthrough of the building. I know I've heard some people saying that he was in a black flat and all.
Right here.
It was all owned and everything was working right.
Not according to his report, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, we're not going to get into it here.
I'm just telling you.
Just this is the facts that I have, I'm sorry if they don't.
That is not true.
Okay, that's fine. So I did put that in the form of a motion.
You have, I'm waiting for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. I'm gonna say roll call on this. Okay. Yes. Marty Douglas.
So I guess my question is, this is a calling for a special meeting? Look at this.
In depth, in detail.
Yes.
Danny Bain?
Yes.
Patty Miller?
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Frank Lashley?
No.
Jerry Burr?
No.
Juan Valer?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Barry Holland?
Yes.
Martin Nunry?
No.
Jerry Cross?
Yes.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Jerry Keen?
Yes.
Lozanne Warren?
No.
Anyone wish to change your vote? That's TMS and Florida.
Madam Chairman, thank you, I yield four.
Do we have any other commissioners that would like to say anything? Commissioner Keen, you recognize?
Can I get my name changed? My. I apologize, I don't like that name. Thank you.
Okay, so there are no other commissioners that want to speak. So we'll move on to number four on your agenda. Do you like to say anything? You're good. Our attorney, Mr. Melton, would you like to say anything?
With the special call meeting, we're gonna have a special agenda. We just, we hope, so don't forget that.
Okay. Number five is the approval of the minutes from last month. I need a motion and a second.
Motion. Second.
Push your buttons, please. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Keen and a second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number six is the report of the public utilities. A motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Keen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Number seven is our first resolution. Resolution one is by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Charles Wood, Alicia Engley, and Leah Harris to Benton County Animal Shelter Board for a term of three years. I have a motion by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Price. Do we have any questions about this resolution? I see none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Kevin. Fourteen minutes. No, fourteen minutes. Resolution two is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward requesting the 104th session of the Tennessee General Assembly to allocate one half of the real estate transfer tax to the county where the tax was collected on a recurring basis. Need a motion, please, and a second. A motion by Commissioner Murphy and a second by Commissioner Miller. Anyone have any questions about this?
So when I went to the governor's conference, they were talking about this and it's something the governor wants to do to help the counties have a little bit more revenue. But all the mayors talked in our meeting and decided to do these resolutions just to kind of give him a bump. It would just help us out with about $130,000 a year as it is right now. It don't mean it's gonna happen, but this would probably help it along a little bit.
Any questions before you vote? I see none, so everyone please vote. Resolution three is a resolution by Department Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of $292,376 received from a nursing grant to various expenditure lines in the school budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Miller. Do we have any questions? There are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Barry. Yes, one minute. Resolution four is a resolution by Road Supervisor Barry Quarter to budget funds in the amount of $49,724.98 received from FEMA for storm damage to a proper expenditure line to fund the purchase of a new dump truck for the Benton County Highway Department. I have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Hall. Anyone have any questions? See none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Barry, fourteen minutes. Resolution five is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $605.42 collected from court fees to fund the purchase of an additional needed piece of data processing equipment, which is a NAS server in the Circuit Court Clerk's office as requested by the judge and the clerk. I have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Price. Anyone has any questions about this? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Motion, Barry, fourteen minutes. Resolution six is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $9,400 to the sheriff's budget to proper expenditure line items. I have a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions for the sheriff? There are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Barry, fourteen minutes. Resolution seven is by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $967 received from various sources to the sheriff's budget to proper expenditure line items. I have a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? I see none, so please vote. Motion, Barry, fourteen minutes. Resolution eight is by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $1,340.60 received from insurance payments on damaged sheriff department vehicles to an expenditure line item to allow for proper expenditure. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions concerning this one? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Barry, fourteen minutes. Number fifteen is the appointing of notaries. We have five, Jennifer Williams, Scott Hill, Kimberly McCall, Carly Valas, and Ashley Hooper. I need a motion and a second to approve these.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Keen. Second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number sixteen is any other business? Do we have any other business anyone would like to bring up?
Do we need to suspend the rules for Resolution nine?
We will, yeah. As soon as I see if there's any other business, then we'll move on to that. I don't think there is any, so. Yes, we do have Resolution nine that was added today, so we will need a motion to suspend the rules to bring this to the floor.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Bain. Okay. The last one. This is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to amend the county conflict of interest and business ethics policy to add required language for the awarding of grants. I know this came in late, this has to do with the Director of Health. Okay. I need, we need to vote for suspending the rule.
Everybody say aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Does anyone have any questions about this resolution? If you wanna let the mayor explain it to you?
So, we've done twenty or thirty grants this year and had a problem because they're all state grants. But the Health Department remodels, a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar remodel, and part of it's federal money. And just today, they sent me this and said, you know, you've gotta change your conflict of interest policy to meet the federal guidelines or they won't be paying the bills. So, all the other counties have already done this, but this is something that has to be in our conflict of interest policy to be able to receive federal money.
Any questions? Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I just have a point of order. To suspend the rules, don't ever properly require to have two-thirds of the jury vote.
Yes, we are. So we haven't voted yet?
Yeah, you did.
We have to roll call. We need to roll call, and that's my fault, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I knew we needed roll call for that, I'm sorry, I apologize. But, suspend the rules. Can we vote on our tablets? Give me just a minute.
You can give me just a second, I'll have that.
Okay. Okay, any questions about this? You go ahead and vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Barry.
Or suspend.
Or suspend. Okay, now we are back to the resolution about the Health Department changing the wording in our ethics policy. Any questions? Okay, now we can vote. If you're for the resolution, vote yes. If you're not, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Barry, fourteen minutes. That's all that we have. I entertain a motion to adjourn. I just meant, I'm sorry. Sheriff Christopher, you would like to say something?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, needless to be honest, we got a chair on what the county commission wants to do. We took a car to one of the local cop duty work, they worked on a patrol car. Been there for several months. They've worked on it for quite a few times and they haven't been able to fix the problem. They're not always working on it, it's just sitting there. Uh, we've got a bill of $950.54. I don't know what y'all, I don't know what y'all want me to do. They haven't fixed the car. And apparently they don't have a fix for it, they're not working on it. They ordered a car for it, did different things, but if it fixes, it's still doing exactly what it's doing. Uh, it is runable, but it's not fixed, not usable. So, y'all want me to pay that bill? Uh, or do you want, what do we want to do? And I don't want to just pay it. We haven't done any results. We don't know what to do on it, it's been sitting there for quite a few, five months. And they're not even working on it anymore. At one point, they cut a piece of a tire, they have a car tire, and put over the top of the transmission and said that was used for us hearing the noise when it was hitting. Uh, so we didn't accept that. And then they ordered a transmission or something for it that wasn't the right one, I understand it, or whatever it is. They still have the fixing, it's still doing exactly what it was doing. And I don't know, I can't remember exactly what it was doing, but it's not useful to drive. We could drive it to another shop, or we could drive it up to the office or something. If y'all want me to pay this bill, or do we need to have the county attorney or the mayor's office or somebody negotiate this with them because they want their money? I'm gonna leave that up to y'all to do. If you want me to go ahead and pay it, we'll pay it. But I just don't know what you want me to do on it because it's not fixed.
Was this brought before the law enforcement committee? Did you bring this before the law enforcement committee, or did you not?
No, ma'am, we was trying to decide, you know, when to bring it up because we kept thinking it was gonna get fixed. And they've worked on it a little more than now, they were just going, I don't think it worked on it last month or so. It's $950.54. So if y'all want me to go ahead and pay it, we'll pay it. But I just didn't, I don't want to pay it again. We're gonna have to turn it up to another shop unless y'all want me to. If that's what you want me to do, I'll be ready to do that. I just like to get the car fixed and be back on the road. What do you say is wrong?
I don't.
Too many miles ago. I don't have any idea. Over a car, a mure. Getting pretty close, getting rid of it, didn't it?
What's the county attorney say?
I would, that was what I was thinking, is that something we could turn over to our county attorney, let him write a letter.
We could always ask, not a problem. And I think Kenny and I have talked about this one before together. You know, if the car was delivered, they said, we're gonna fix it. And they don't, obviously, you're not gonna owe them money. And again, if they just said, we're gonna work on it and try to fix it, that's a little different issue. Sounds like a lot of money to me or something, it's not what I'm finishing. I hate to say you can't waste it, but I'll do whatever y'all want me to do.
Have they sent you a bill and described what's on an invoice? That we did this, this, and this, or it's just labor for Doc?
Like this right here, it's just, that's the, it's just the statement we've got. They've worked on several different things. They thought it was this, they thought it was that. At one point, they was gonna put a transmission in, ordered one and said it wasn't the right one. Uh, they've tried different things, but the last couple of months, I don't think they've even worked on it, it's just sitting there. Going down there to get the car, and you know, we got the mechanic cleaning on the thing or whatever. So, I just, I wanted some guidance on what y'all want to do.
I think the semantics of a liability on the county or the sheriff's department would be, what did you ask them to do? What was gonna be the end result? You just drive and say, hey, fix my transmission. Nine hundred dollars later and five months passed, they said, we can't fix it. You may not owe them anything. If you said, find out what's wrong with the transmission, and they've got labor and actual cost in trying to find it out, and they say, we don't know what's wrong and we can't fix it, then we may owe it. It may be a legal question, but then, is this a local shop? Is this, is this a Benton County shop?
We just don't, I mean, we didn't know what was wrong with it. It started making this noise and kind of jerking. So we took it down there and said, we don't know what's wrong with it. They said, we'll take a look at it, see if we can fix it. They've tried different things.
Just beyond their capability of fixing it, they mean they don't know that?
I think that's what they said once more, I'm not sure what it was.
Have they recommended any future repairs, like just replace a something, or?
I haven't spoken with them directly. Uh, when we went down there and talked to them, I guess Tim may have talked to them, but they just said, we don't know what to do with it, I believe in what they said, or we don't know how to fix it at this point.
I think the details of liability would be what you asked them to do, what was their directive from you to fix it. It may be a legal question, like I say, but it kind of depends. Like if you showed up and said, can you fix it? And they said, yes, and then they don't fix it, well, then it may not be liable.
Usually what we do is take it down there and go, we don't know what it is. They need a car fixed, I believe with them. And we've never, we've never run into this before, that's why I wanted some guidance on what you're gonna do.
Could I ask a question? So is this the shop that you use for a lot of repairs?
Yeah, we try to spread it out and install it.
But do we go there pretty often? Uh, my personal opinion is you need to pay the bill because they did the work in good faith, try and fix it. It's just something they can't fix, so they probably have materials and labor. To that, to that point. I mean, that's just my opinion, that's what I would do on my personal level anyway.
I just want, somebody tell me what you want me to do, or if you want to, I'll go ahead and just pay the bill.
Do we have your opinion? Legal opinion on what?
It's just like Mr. Lashley said, until we know exactly what was asked and agreed to, it'd be hard to come up with a full answer. But I understand all sides of it. If we owe the money, we do. And at the end, if we don't, a lot of money paid out.
I would think if they gave you an anonymized invoice that said, we've got this much labor, this many, you know, materials in it, we probably owe it. I mean, I don't want to shaft. I mean, I don't want to shaft somebody, but I mean, if they just said, you know, we can't fix it, we tried, and we're going to give it back to you. I mean, it's kind of the semantics of how the, how it was brought down there, but I would think we would owe it personally, but I don't know if it needs to go in front of law enforcement or budget or whatever.
I believe, Chairman, that they spoke with Chief Deputy Arnold, and I put the transmission in, but they said they wouldn't put another transmission in until we paid you. So, I don't know what the deal is, I haven't spoken with them directly myself, I just helped them take it down, said, did you fix this, we don't know what's wrong. Said they wouldn't work to pay the bill.
Makes sense, I could probably.
I'm not, I'm taking the middle of the road, I don't know what y'all want me to do, I don't know what legally we have to do or not to do.
Floor's open, does anybody want to make a recommendation of what you think we should do, or do you want to show a, show of hands if you think he should pay it, or turn it over to the county attorney?
Get some more information, right? Has Bain, whether what they said wasn't said right now.
Is putting it off a month, is that going to make?
Been there for several months, I, my suggestion, when this Melton talked before, maybe get him to contact them and then see whether it's labor cost, whether it's parts cost, or what it is, because I keep saying, I have not spoken with them directly, but we need the car, and it's just that, we're not gaining ground, put it off for a hundred bucks. If we can get something to do.
I would love to see an itemized fee.
We probably have that.
Okay, it seems to be a recommendation of the sheriff to wait, or not to wait, but let the attorney talk and see.
Give him an itemized, just let him contact them, give everything matching.
Yeah.
Go for it, whatever his suggestion is that we do, we're talking at that point, and I think it would be the right thing.
Is that the will of the commission, is that what you would like for the sheriff to do, turn it over to the county attorney and let him check it out for? Okay. Does anybody disagree to that? Okay, I think that's your answer, Sheriff, nobody disagreed on that decision? Okay. Okay. Anyone else? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Motion by Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Cross. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, we are adjourned.
That's the quickest response that you think.